Good evening, everyone. Executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of October 19th was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 50 Nellis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. The statement of compliance setting forth date time and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and a roll call was taken. This meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. I ask everyone to please stand for the flag salute, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So at this point, may I deliver my administrative summary report? So to get started, I'd like to talk a little bit about the Israeli-Palestinian war. The effects of the Israel-Palestine war are far-reaching. Of course, those most impacted by the tragedies are those amid the conflict. The conflict is touching the lives of families in communities worldwide. Wayne is home to students and staff with cultural ties both Israel and Palestine, making the conflict deeply personal for many. The images on the news and social media are causing stress and anger and a sense of helplessness for many of our students. This has led to strong emotions in our schools and in some instances has divided our learning community. Amid the ongoing conflict, I implore our school community to think locally about this tragic conflict. As individuals, we are powerless to end the airstrikes and attacks. However, we can choose how we respond. We can choose to be compassionate and understanding, to learn from each other as neighbors, classmates, classmates and colleagues. Here at home, this is where our power lies. Our school administration and staff has been thinking and acting at local level by meeting with religious leaders from the community to hear concerns and share how we are addressing tensions within our school community. We encourage everyone, parents, staff, students, community members, and board members to report inappropriate behaviors. Let me be clear that bullying will not be tolerated in our schools or online. There are other concrete steps we are taking to encourage healthy dialogue and help students deal with very strong and often overwhelming emotions. Teaching students to think critically about the information they encounter on social media is critical and a major part of our school curriculum and culture. It has never been more critical than now. Our exceptional Wayne teachers consistently remind and challenge their students to think about whether sources are reliable and to verify information with credible sources before accepting any of this fact. Part of that fact, checking since to the home life. We've shared resources with parents on ways to help their children use social media safely, responsibly, and compassionately. We also encourage students to talk with counselors and other trusted adults about what they're experiencing and feeling with social media in class, in the hallways, and on campus. As a school community, we're firmly committed to being a sanctuary for learning, growth, and understanding during these challenging times. Everyone is welcome here in Wayne Township Public Schools. We'll continue to act locally, protect the safe, supportive, and inclusive environment that together with our community we have worked so hard to build. So I'd like to move on to the rest of my report. So a number of things to share with the board and with the community. First of all, we have some presentations that we're going to make tonight. In the central office, we've been looking forward to this board meeting for some time due to the presentations which we will be sharing. While the agenda itself is relatively small compared to others, there are some really important recommendations and information we'll be sharing. The first presentation is related to a parent-teacher pathway partnership with Montclair State University, and the specifics are reflected with Agenda Item S4. This is an innovative program that keeps the Wayne Public Schools and Montclair State University at the very forefront of finding solutions to real problems in education through collaboration and partnership. We're also excited to share the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment test results, and with those results, we're able to share more about the academic part of our pandemic recovery. We think you will agree that all indicators are headed in the right direction. On another note, I was fortunate to have the opportunity to attend the Fallon Elementary School Student Council induction ceremony yesterday. It was a wonderful event with so many happy parents and students. Assemblyman Christopher Phillips also attended the event and spoke to our students about leadership. On Monday, October 16th, employees from the school district held a parent-professional job fair at a William Patterson University location, and we had great success. Under the Approval for District Staff Resolution T8, we are recommending four new parent-professionals that came to our schools through this job fair, and two more parent-professionals will be recommended at the November 2nd. I'd like to report that the first Coffee with the Superintendent event was held at APT on the 16th with great discussion. Next dates are Fallon, November 1st, Pakenak, November 3rd, and Randall Carter, November 14th. Also, please join the Wayne Special Parents Association for the first-ever Turkey Drive on Saturday, November 18th to support and raise awareness for Wayne Township Public Schools Unified Sports Programs. All proceeds will be donated to the Unified Sports Program, the event the kid plays at Wayne Hills High School. More information will be shared with tomorrow's newsletter. Also, I'd like to take a moment to congratulate our student athletes and coaches at both of our high schools for another exceptional athletic season filled with a variety of championships, but more importantly, lifetime lessons and memories for our student athletes. There is a reason why the Wayne Township Schools continue to be ranked as the best school district in New Jersey for athletes, and also ranked 13th among all school districts in the United States. Following the summary tells the story about why our athletic programs maintain such high state and national rankings. First of all, girls tennis at Wayne Hills, they're the 2023 Passaic County Champions. What's really special is that out of the past 20 years, they have won the county championship 19 times. The only other school that won the championship during that time period was Wayne Valley. Likewise, in gymnastics, Wayne Hills is the champion for Passaic County, and they've been the champion for the past five years. Valley was the champions for five years before that. But prior to that, there has been no time that anyone could remember where either Wayne Hills or Wayne Valley was not the Passaic County Gymnastics Champion. So very impressive. So as far as Wayne Valley High School, they're the girls volleyball 2023 Passaic County Champions, the boys and girls soccer teams both made it to the Passaic County Championship game on Saturday, with the girls game at 1:00, the boys game at 3:30 in Clifton. Also, the boys' cross-country Big North Independence Division championship was won by the boys' cross-country team. Also, another exciting thing about our athletic program is basically Hills and Valley working together. Athletic teams from both high schools came together for a number of special events to create awareness and raise funds for worthy causes. First of all, field hockey, the Pinkout Breast Cancer Awareness Challenge for football and cheer, One Town One Heart, Orange Out for Rocco Civalella for the Scholarship Fund, gymnastics, Pinkout plus a whole lot of orange, but also for Rocco Scholarship Fund. For boys and girls soccer, One Team One Dream, Let's Find a Cure, raising funds for breast cancer. For girls volleyball, Dig for a Cure, also raising funds for breast cancer. Okay, this part of my report, which I know is rather extensive, I have to provide the HIV grades report, so it has to be done at this meeting. So I have to go through basically some standard language, and then we'll get into some statistics about our HIV grades. So all New Jersey public schools are required to complete an annual self-assessment to determine compliance under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. School scores must be presented annually at the Public Board of Education meeting by October 31st. Each school must evaluate performance in eight core areas or elements, which include HIV programs, training, other staff instruction and training programs, curriculum and instruction on HIV and related information, HIV personnel, school-level HIV incident reporting procedures, HIV investigation procedures, and HIV reporting. Each of the indicators under the above categories awards no points for not meeting the criteria, one for partial, two for meets expectation, three for exceeding the expectation. The total possible score in all the categories with the three adds up to 78. So in other words, 78 is the maximum score you could possibly earn. This year, our district average reported was, which indicates our schools have been able to maintain a high level of student support service throughout the pandemic and ongoing recovery. This is thanks to our exceptional professional school counselors, who also serve as anti-bullying specialists and are caring administrators, who take a proactive approach to supporting our students, who take daily actions to stop bullying. These efforts have been especially commendable at the schools, all respond to various challenges related to COVID and the social recovery plans that are in place. So specific scores are as high as Randall Carter and Creekness or the Childhood Center, both reported a perfect score of 78 for the past year. Wayne Valley, George Washington, James Fallon, JFK, and Ryerson, all reported a score of 77. Again, that's out of 78, so they're only one point short of a perfect score. APT Lafayette, Pakenak, Pines Lake, and Wayne Hills reported a score of 76. Tunis and Scotta Colfax reported a score of 75, and Anthony Wayne Hill School reported a score of 73, which is only five points away from the maximum score of 78. A copy of each school's preliminary submission is attached to the agenda for public review. It is important to note that the slight variation in reported scores between our schools still exceeds the standard definition in almost all categories. So thank you once again to all the teachers, the support staff, counselors, child safety members, administrators who work tirelessly to combat bullying proactively and to ensure that our schools are safe, welcoming, and positive environments for all of our students. And finally, the HIV report for this meeting, I'm reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying in Wayne Township Public Schools. There were 10 incidents of HIV reported since my last report, and three of those cases were deemed to meet the actual criteria of an HIV incident. So we are well ahead of where we were last year. Actually, I should say well behind where we were compared to last year's numbers. So we definitely are headed in the right direction. Okay? Okay. So now we're ready to get into our presentation. So if you could give us a minute, we'll get things started. Okay, so at this point, what we'd like to note is, we'll get started, we'll make some introductions, but we'll do our introductory discussion about this topic. So if we can get to the first slide, please. So we'd like to talk about something that's very important to the Wayne Township Public Schools and important across the country. Every day, whether it's in newspapers, professional publications, or in television, there's no shortage of attention being given to what many consider to be one of the greatest threats to the American educational system we know. Teacher shortages and a lack of young people seeking careers in education combined is a major issue with no easy answers. So you'll find it interesting, actually, both of our presentations have roots in Goal Four, so this is one of our district goals for this year. But there's also a goal from last year related to MTSS. And so when we get to the next part of our presentation, we'll talk a little bit more about that. Bottom line is that we knew that as a district, we need to act locally, we need to find ways to address the teacher shortage, and we included that in. As you can see, the very bottom line of the goal is to develop a parent-teacher program. So there are many people who are concerned about issues, they complain about issues, but then the actual doing, the solving of the problem, is another story. This is one partial solution. So what I'd like to do is just mention that the next phase, so we established a goal, right? We knew we needed a parent-teacher program. And then Assistant Superintendent Donna Raishman sought out potential partners that we could work with to help us meet our goal and develop this new and innovative program. So today, you're going to hear about that work. I'd like to turn things over at this point to Donna.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. This summer, we spent lots of time, once again, planning for how we were going to assess and meet our student needs, assess and meet staffing needs. I reached out to all the local universities, we have lots of partnerships, and talked about the possibility of a parent-to-teacher program and how we can present some options that were feasible, that would be interesting to our parent professionals. We have so many who worked really hard last year. As part of the special education goal last year, we increased our training, we created another job description, we recognized that the roles of parent professionals look very different, dependent on the classroom that they're in, the demographic of students that they're working with, and we should really dedicate training to them. They demonstrated our loyalty to our teachers, our students, and our classrooms. The jobs are not easy, and many of them have taken on roles to support the teachers that are elevated in a way that we never anticipated. There are so many varied needs, and they really need to be part of the process every single day, facilitating alongside the teacher to meet the individual and varied specific needs of our students. When we spoke with Montclair, they presented a really unique and interesting option that we are so excited about. This is a partnership that is a first for them, it's going to be a first in the state, and I'm going to introduce our visitors at this time, and they will then be able to share the specifics for the program. We are joined by Dr. Joseph Aluwali, who is the chairperson of the Educational Leadership Program, also a Wayne resident.
Yes, that's correct.
Ms. Iris DeMayo, who is the Director of Strategic Partnerships and Community Engagement, also another parent who, and I remember you from Fallon School, and that's where you talk about your children. We have Ms. Carla Engstrom, she is the Sports and Program Administration for the Educational Leadership Program, and new to their team, and we're happy to have you here tonight, is Jeff Bendit, who is also part of the Educational Leadership Team.
Do you want to go to Wayne?
It always circles back to Wayne.
It's a powerful part.
Yeah, right part.
So at this time, Iris, you're going to be presenting this part of the presentation. Are you ordinarily to be standing? I'm injured, so I said I would be more comfortable. Okay, I was more comfortable sitting, but we are happy to be standing, and I will-
I'm sorry, I'm going to give you, yeah, I'm going to be behind you, Dr. Tolbert.
You can tell me when to play.
Because I want the audience to see as well.
Why don't I do this?
Yes.
Just hang over a little bit, and you're welcome.
Great, well, thank you. Thank you, everyone. My name is Iris DeMayo, and I am a proud resident for 19 years here at Wayne School District. I have three children, I went to Fallon, and also Anthony Wayne, I'm very excited. So they received a wonderful education, especially special education. Wayne has the best special education team in this Passaic County, and I think in the state, because my children, I have two children with disability, learning disability, and they are doing a great job because the education that they received here at Wayne School District. So that I have to commend the work that they're doing. I'm so excited, I could jump, I could jump, but I'm so excited I am to be here with all of you to bring this wonderful partnership that we have. We're bringing two powerhouse institutions of education. Montclair, that has a historical, you know, we are, you know, we're known by the state that we are doing a good job because we have a lot of students coming to us, we are ranked number 10 in the nation, and now I just learned that Wayne is also ranked 13 in the nation. So we have two powerhouse institutions from higher education to K-12 coming together to join forces to create, grow you on program, okay? To help parent professionals that are working in your district for many, many years, and they know the students, they know the curriculum, they know the teachers, and now they want to become teacher of record, we're going to help them to do that. So that's what we're going to do next. So can you bring the next one? Well, I am excited to say that what we're going to do first, we have to do a needs assessment. So we're doing a needs assessment, we're going to do a survey to find out what is the history, academic history of the teach, of the parent professionals, what are they, how many credits they have, what path they would like to get into. We have three pathways that we're going to be entertaining, that we're going to be exploring right now as the pilot. It's a pilot because we're going to explore different models, we're going to collaborate in creating the right model that I hope it will be the model the same university is going to adopt, and all the universities are going to take. That's what I'm going to say.
So the word thing out this week, and rumor has it, there are 33 interested parent professionals who would like to explore getting their teacher.
So I'm very excited. In addition to that, I'm just going to put a plug out there that we are going to become the first institution in New Jersey to get recognized by the U.S. Department of Labor to be an apprenticeship provider. And Wayne will be hopefully our first partner in crime. So I just want to say publicly, I'm going to invite Dr. Tolbert and his team to November 14th, we're going to have a signing that we're going to have the governor there, we're going to have the Commissioner of Education, and hopefully you will be able to say a few words in this collaboration. I just wanted to be happy to have you there.
Do you want to talk, or would you like me to talk a little bit about why this apprenticeship thing is such a unique aspect of the program?
Go ahead, you, I know you, you, go ahead, say it.
Yeah, but no, I think this is really awesome. It's a new way-
I wanted to bring it out there.
Well, it's a new way of thinking about the work of a parent professional. So we know that, for example, in the trades, there are people who learn trade through apprenticeship, right? So up until now, a parent professional could spend years and years and years in a classroom, and they're essentially completing apprenticeship, and no credit is being given for that. So under this model, now there's apprenticeship, there's the opportunity to use that as part of their requirements for the program, which is really an exciting thing. But again, a departure from-
Like alternate route.
How anybody-
Yes.
Deals with the fact that there are people that are in our classrooms every day, working hard, seeing a skilled teacher at work, making sense of what's going on in the classroom, and in many cases, they're capable of taking over the classroom already, but obviously they're still without that certificate to actually be teacher. So that's a huge deal.
This is going to be historic, a historical, you know, moment for the state, for all of us in higher education. We're very excited to be able to bring that to New Jersey and to be able to partner with a, you know, a great district that is large enough to be able to hold, because it has a lot of parent professionals, and you'll be able to have a good, you know, placement for them to be able to stay. So right now, you have there, I'm a visual learner, so I put together a flow chart. This is kind of like what will happen with an individual, a candidate that will come in to Montclair with 60 credits and be able to finish first their undergrad, and they will be, they'll be taking an undergrad on the liberal studies within education concentration. And in that year, it will be, I will show you later the schedule, but it will be about 14 to 15 months that they're going to finish the extra 60 credits, so they could have 120 and graduate with an undergrad. They're also going to prepare to have the requirements that they need to be able to transition to a teacher certification. So that's kind of like the path that you see there. They're going to complete, we're going to help them with a practice review, they're going to have to do the 50-hour professional service, but by the time they're finished and they graduate, they'll be able to transition without no glitches into an alternate route P3 or K6, as they also continue to work in the district. And everything's going to happen all together at once. And they're going to be able to continue, have a life, you know, work, and continue to do their responsibility, because that's the key. A lot of them cannot do a traditional education, teaching education, because they will have to interrupt their work assignment. So the next slides will bring you to the sample schedule. So we have, for example, we have a group of individuals that started in spring 2024, they will be able to complete by summer of 2025. Right now, Montclair has a great way of offering programs, because this they decided to do is they're going to play around with schedule. So right now, if you try, when you went to college, you probably took 14 weeks and you took 12 credits all at once, right? But right now, what we decided to do at Montclair, we decided to break it in half. So individuals could do seven-week, six-credit, and another seven-week, six-credit. So like that will be more accelerated, more condensed, and they'll be able to focus only on those two classes at a time while they're working and not be able to interrupt or get, you know, get sidetracked with any overwhelming work at school or at work in personal life. Then after they complete, they will be able to finish by August. Their undergrad, and then they're going to go right into the alternate route in the full semester to start, get taken their certification courses, will be graduate courses. Can you give me this next slide? And then here, you will see, they're going to continue, so by, so the first, that year, see, when we're done with the apprenticeship, that year that they're going to be doing, they're going to be doing the first alternate route, the first teacher certification, there'll be apprentices as well, and then their last semester, their last year, fall '26, '27, they could be the teacher of record and continue working in the district, and they'll complete. If they want to continue and get their masters, the P3 individuals could take additional 12 credits, and they would end up with a masters in four years. So they'll have undergrad certification and a master within four years. Okay? Right? Isn't that good?
Yes.
Don't you want to go back to school? I want to go back to school, huh? But thank you very much, I'm very excited, I can't wait for November 14th to celebrate with all of you and, you know, and bring this home, bring this home. Thank you.
Questions?
I have questions, yes.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
So if I'm a parent professional right now, I have my undergraduate in psychology-
Oh, yes, excellent, thank you.
So for some strange reason, you know, I'm a parent professional, I have my undergraduate.
Okay.
So do I jump in at a certain point?
If you're a parent professional with your degree and you do not have a certification, what we need to do with you is we need to evaluate where you are, because if you are not, you need to, if you have a subject area like English, History, Science, then you go right into the alternate route and you become an apprentice. But if you, if you, like you say, is a psychology major, then we have to evaluate that, because you might need to go into what we call it, you have to find, you know, if you want to be an English teacher, depending on what subject area, or you're my, the concentration, thank you, concentration, or maybe it would be better for you to do your masters, because you already have an undergrad. So we don't want, we don't, we don't want to, depending, depending on your degree, depending on the degree that you have at the time. So if you have a subject area, a concentration of History, Language Arts, or Science, which is why is, right now, is the high needs, then you'll be able to go right into a apprentice's alternate route. Yes.
You're saying this, six credits per semester, what's the cost of the semester?
What is the cost for the semester right now?
Six credits.
For six credit, I don't have that information with me, my, I apologize for that.
Classes are asynchronous, so it's at a discounted rate.
Yes, so definitely you're going to discount it.
We have done a lot of assessment and analysis of that, just, you know, and what teachers, the program participants will understand is, once they start in a full-time job, they'll recover their investment in one year.
And the other part-
Within a year.
But because it's, because it's an asynchronous program, right, there's a reduced cost, plus if you are a parent professional, there's also tuition reimbursement, so we take off a little bit of both that, so there is an opportunity for tuition reimbursement under the current contract.
And the other, the other good news is that when we become an apprenticeship provider, the district is going to get credit. They qualify to apply for tax credit to pay the parent to continue working. That's another benefit, and we also have qualified for grants that we could supplement. But right now, we do not have, because we do not have the designation of a parent, of apprenticeship, we cannot apply, but when we become, we could apply. It opens up a lot of grants opportunity for us.
Do you have any questions?
So we have a second part of the presentation, because in discussion, there were lots of ideas that were inspired, and almost weekly, I have teachers who reach out who say, I'm enrolling in a leadership program, can I come in and speak with you, and can, maybe you can guide me and let me know which one. We have many who participate in the Montclair State Leadership Program, and ultimately, they have to complete their 150 internship hours for principal, 300 for their school administrator degree, and Dr. Toback and I always work with them to support them with projects. But when discussing all of this, you know, we also recognize we have 15 schools, and our teachers are working individually, we have an overwhelming amount of work and excitement to just keep things moving in Wayne, and we can create a cohort here so that our teachers who are in these programs, who are either working alone asynchronously, traveling to the university or going to another school, can work within our facilities and come together and have their own cohort, and be supported by our team to give them real, authentic projects. And then also, we know, we always look for ways to build capacity from within and promote from within, and we're developing future leaders as part of our succession planning, which you should always have in place. So we are joined by Carla Engstrom, who is going to share, and we have a contract on tonight as well, the information and details about what is involved with having an in-house cohort.
Well, thank you very much, everyone, for hosting us today. We're very excited about this additional opportunity for an MA in Educational Leadership from Montclair State University, but hosted in the Wayne Township Public Schools. I've had the good opportunity to talk to Donna and Mark extensively, and one thing that resonated with me repeatedly was their commitment to teacher quality, right? That they have the best talent in Wayne, they're recruiting the best talent, and they're investing in those individuals, those educators and those teachers, to continue their growth and be the best in the district for these kids. And I saw this firsthand, actually, when Donna and her colleagues presented at the MSUNER, which is the Montclair State University Network for Educational Renewal, they presented their vision for professional development. And the plan was comprehensive, it was multifaceted, it was engaging, and you could really see the passion that they talked about, teacher quality, and the follow-through and implementation, which was really wonderful. So our MA at Montclair State University follows the PECL standards for leaders, the professional standards of educational leaders. And we're also CAPE accredited, so if you're not familiar with accreditation, this is when peers in educational leadership from throughout the nation, from all the corners, kind of come and examine your program, and they do interviews, they sample student work, they examine your experiences and practices and assignments and things like that. So we've been accredited continually since the inception of CAPE accreditation, and since the inception of the program, honestly. And I mention all that because you care a lot about teacher quality. And I mention all that because you care a lot about teacher quality, we care a lot about teacher quality and leadership quality. Our most recent review from two years ago from the CAPE accreditation team found us with what is called no AFIs, so no areas for improvement. And we were very, very excited about that. But the thing is, we know as educators, there's always room for improvement, right? So you will not find us sort of putting our feet up and saying, huh, no AFIs. We're going to keep pushing and pushing and pushing for that kind of improvement that we want for our leaders and our teachers. So I feel like there's a common thread there where you care a lot about teacher quality, we care a lot about teacher quality and leader quality. Our MA in Educational Leadership is known by US News and World Report as being 10th in the nation. And we're very proud of that ranking. And so that program that's nationally ranked is being brought here and hosted by Wayne. So all the curriculum, experience, pedagogy, et cetera, is what will be brought into Wayne. But it will be different in that Mark and Donna are committed to customizing that experience, to the values, priorities, et cetera, of the Wayne Township Public Schools. And they're going to be giving access to, you know, the systems and policies and et cetera that would enhance the program from what is already really good at Montclair State University and adding the values of Wayne into it. If you don't mind turning to the next slide. One of the things I didn't mention yet is although we're ranked 10th in the nation by US News and World Report, the ranking that's most important to us by US News and World Report is that we're number one in student engagement. And so for us as teachers, while we're all faculty in educational leadership, at the end of the day, we care about student engagement. So I want you to know that the program that you're supporting and hosting in your district is a quality program and the engagement level is very high. And it's only bound to be better with the support of the leaders within the district. The program itself is a 36-credit program. And if you know anything about leadership in the state of New Jersey, you have to have a master's degree in order to be certified in educational leadership. So, and there's four different certifications. Our 12-course sequence will include the required coursework, internships, et cetera, for individuals to be certified as supervisor, principal, school administrator, and if you have any guidance counselors that are pursuing their leadership, it will include the director of school counseling services as well.
Go to the next slide.
Yeah. This is just a snapshot of the program. One of the lovely things about partnering with Montclair State University in this way is that, like I said earlier, we think a lot about quality. So it's, it's not uncommon for us to be having focus groups and sort of examining how to make our program better and continually pushing ourselves. And so what you see here is something that we've learned sort of across the way from these, along the way from these focus groups, is that graduate learning occurs best when we break it into incremental parts. So Iris talked a little bit about these seven-week schedules, right? So a semester is usually between 14 and 16 weeks. Rather than taking multiple classes at the same time, graduate students are juggling their full-time jobs, their families, and graduate school, and they're focusing on only one course at a time. So no competing readings, no competing presentations, assignments, et cetera, et cetera. So every seven to eight weeks, they'll be cycling through a different series of classes. The only classes that aren't seven or eight weeks are the two required state internships for school administrator certification, so that's 150 hours, done in a central office setting, and the 300-hour internship for principal certification, which is building-based leadership. I have to say, one of our points of pride is we always are examining our program and that's like a value that we're always trying to instill in our future leaders, is that we do a lot of hands-on learning and experiences. And we want to make sure that, you know, it's built through all our classes, but especially in our internships, we don't want people doing 300 hours of observation, right? We want them to show that they can be agents of change. That's what leaders are. They change and improve constantly, right? So when they're in these internships, they're getting the support and scaffolding from leaders in their building and their district, but they're beginning to take the initial steps to implement change and make improvements in some small or larger scale. And so those classes, those internships are full semesters, so 14 or 16 weeks to earn those internship hours to implement action plans, et cetera, et cetera. I'm trying to think if there's anything else that I've missed out here.
The discount.
Oh, I was going there. Yeah. One of the things that is nice about hosting us is that you get a tuition discount. So while many of your students have been coming up to Montclair State to do our award-winning program, hosting it here in Wayne gives them an 18% discount on tuition, which is quite sizable. You asked earlier what the tuition was for graduate. I think it's $6.90 a credit or something like that. But the graduate tuition for like a regular-priced class is like eight-something.
Eight forty.
Eight forty? Yeah. So, so it's sizable to pay $6.90 compared to eight forty a credit. So the tuition is wonderful. It gives an opportunity too for teacher leaders from within the district who are emerging leaders to kind of get some formal training and education and support from leaders within the district, which I know is, you know, happening already in many levels. But they also get this inter-school experience. Wayne is a large district. And so they'll get to network and kind of learn from other buildings and other leaders and, and use all the wonderful leadership resources and, and teaching resources that you have here.
Thank you.
Sure.
So I, I think for, for me, and you, you touched on Tracy and I showcasing, we shared the Wayne Township Learning Center and how we've evolved and grown with other districts that are part of the M-CURNO program. But it'll be really another way to take it to the next level for our teachers to come together if they have an interest in leadership and be able to engage in projects aligned with their district goals. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt. As a person, I'm biased here because I did this program. I had Dr. Oluwale, Oluwale, and you were brutal. So I'm going to testify as a teacher in the classroom. This is no joke. This is not a skate through. It's a real program. I think I hired you for Eli 510 and you were just murder on me. Long days, you didn't care. Let's go whoosh and you went to it. But the point of it is, it's an excellent program. I was under Dr. Capaldi, I was under Dr. Volkley, yourself, he's excellent people here. This is no joke. People think, oh, it's an, it's an apprenticeship. We'll kind of shove them through. This is not a shove through. This is something that people emerge out and they become real education leaders. I hold a supervisory certificate or principal certificate. I already had an MA, so I didn't need the second MA in this case. But I thought I, I went to Columbia and I was great and did it. Oh, no, 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 no. They humble you quickly and you learn quickly and you get a good education out of it, though. This is an excellent opportunity. I actually want to grab some information because my home district where I work's going to want to get on this also. So I'll be sending the fly, I'll send the flyers out to them.
Don't worry.
That's the biggest problem we have right now is staffing. So this is without a doubt an excellent idea.
But let's make Wayne first.
Well, you make Wayne first. I want to retake that test ticket on you. I want to take that test again. You kill me on that test.
As a proprietor.
Well, as a proprietor, we'll, we'll feed them the idea and they'll give it to us back later on. You guys will go first here. But my point to everybody in the board here is this is, just walking in, even though you guys are doing this, this is serious stuff. This is really what we need more than anything else, especially the parents becoming teachers. I know dozens of parents who could be great classroom teachers and just don't have the opportunity. So as usual in Wayne, I'm the guy who puts the positive spin and everything. We're ahead of the curve as everybody else. And this is something that, you'll be seeing this in five years from everybody else who will have been done already and be an old veteran on it. So thank you for the presentation. It's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I know it was mentioned that 33 paraprofessionals had interest in the other program. How many candidates do we have for this program?
We did not share this out yet. We wanted to present it to the board first. And you know what? So I, I expect, anticipate that there'll be significant interest because we hear almost weekly, they said, from teachers who are interested in these programs and asking for advice and direction about how, where, do you have recommendations? I think this makes it convenient for them, it makes it attainable and achievable, and they work with their peers from other schools.
Another indicator we have is our lunch and learn program. So that's something that we run throughout the year for aspiring administrators, so there'll be workshops. And those are packed. So there is no shortage of people who have interest. And I'm sure that some of them are already improving, so others are not.
Will there be a cutoff for our waitlist? So if there's 50 people that show up, they want to start spring 2024?
We do two sessions. Don't worry. We do get them.
I'm just asking.
That would not, that would not stop us.
Mrs. Kazan?
I just want to say kudos to our administration. I mean, this is not the first time they've brought something this wonderful and innovative to the board for approval. I think back to when we started the in-house professional development. That, that was pivotal and, and, and unique, and it saved us a ton of money. And so many classes filled to the brim. Then there was our mentorship program for anyone that wanted to move up. I mean, this is how you retain good staff, plain and simple. And this is just another level. And I can't say that I'm surprised, but you deserve kudos and our thanks. And this is a wonderful thing for the Wayne School District.
And is the whole board ready to come to the summary yet? Yes.
Yes.
November 14.
It's 10 o'clock?
It would be, it would be 1:30 to 3:30. Yes. And it will begin at 2:05. We're going to have some refreshments, some late lunch from one to email. So I will, I will send it to Donna and then she will send it to all of you. Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I want to say thank you. And, you know, we talked, as Dr. Toback started out, speaking about how it's becoming so difficult to hire teachers today. So it's not just about the hiring process, it's about the retention process today. I can personally speak from going for my EDS of driving from here to Seaton Hall at 3 o'clock in the afternoon is no fun. The ability to stay right where you work, to take the classes. And I think the eight-week program is so important because it gives you as the teacher or the professor, you're able to hone in on certain things. And it's more, it's not just glossing over, here we go, okay, we finished the book cover to cover. No. And one thing that I've always prided myself in as an educator is, it's not about mastering the book. It's about mastering the skill.
Yes.
Anybody can be book smart, but to go out and do it is the hardest thing in the world. And kudos to all of you and to the administration. And you guys just keep upping one more level constantly. But that's what it takes. You want to be ranked 13th in the country, that's what it takes. You can't rest on your laurels. And the board, the, the administration, everyone. And having great, having the ability to work with great institutions and have those partnerships is amazing. And especially people from Wayne. Yes, Mrs. DeMay, I do remember you from Wayne. Because my kids were with yours.
Oh, so you're going to Los Angeles, yeah?
Yes. But thank you so much. Thank you, everybody. We really appreciate it and look forward to really doing some great things.
Thank you. And I want to give you an opportunity to, to leave. Yeah. So that you don't have to pay for the testing.
Retake a five-minute break.
Retake a five-minute break.
Thank you so much. Thank you. It was great. You had a great presentation.
Thanks very much.
Nice to meet you in person.
Great to meet you. Thank you so much.
I still forgive you for the, I still forgive you for the classes.
I love it. I love it.
How are you doing? I teach in the field.
He said he wasn't coming, so.
Well, I'm thinking of entering into the after-introduction. And if I do that, I may go forward to. Too much, too much. We'll just try to get administrative decisions. So I said, okay, good enough. I helped him. When he finally did Rocky, we were on the rock. Well, I was education technology.
And make it to the family.
Education and administration. So it's things like how to do our writing and administrative. How to be a director of technology, because it comes in. And then every day I jumped on the side of everything I'm doing right now. This guy killed me. He just slaughtered me. Oh, please. Hey, look, you're on iron. I'm on fire and iron. Absolutely.
Yes, it's locked, it's out a lot of that. Even though I always liked that, it's still.
Yes, it's still up.
Is that your book we're studying?
Who? Dr. Milken?
Well, that's his story.
Okay, what about Dr. Volk? You know?
You, oh, I think you're asking about her.
Oh, she retired. What is Dr. Volk? She's still there? She's just like you. She killed me. So the Volk killed me, but thank you so much. My pleasure, guys. We'll look, look forward to it. We're in the future with you guys. All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much.
One of these two places. All right, we'll go to one of the two places. We look at it. It's like super.
Yeah, yeah.
Literally carefully. And so, we don't want to get dressed up, you know, so last night. So we go to this other place. The other place. I get there, we get a five minute. We get there, we're sitting, we're having drinks. Doors are open to find. So we're there for three, like, you know, next door is the other place. Let's just go over there. We'll have a drink. We'll see what's out here. You know, we're not getting any rewards. Two kind of one-burned margaritas. Oh, I was like. Finish it. All right. 10 after 5 minutes, go over there, whatever. I was like, this way, I'm like. Yeah. Same, I was dressed casually. I go there. I'm having one, another martini.
Yeah.
So I have a martini. I get to bill before we go in. $15. Buy one, get the other one free. Had happy. So $15, go sit in the table. And wait for something.
Now we're.
We're here up until 7 o'clock. So. At the Irish Bar, buy one, get one. In your entree, it's bar, buy one, get one. I was like, steak. I could sit on the beach desk.
Yeah.
So $1. I said $100 for a meal. It was $100. I was like, $104 dollars. It's like Mexican.
I, I, I just tripped over my dog tonight. I didn't see him on the floor and I scattered.
Oysters, oysters? Did you say oysters? It broke?
It just happened.
It's like, whatever. Two weeks ago, I went to a place.
Okay. So at this point in the evening, we're going to go ahead with our majority student learning assessments, our standardized testing, summary results, which is also required by the Department of Education. We have to share our results with the community, with the Board of Education, and within 60 days of receipt of those results. So that's what we're going to do tonight. So if you could go to the next slide. So what have we learned from our standardized test results? So some basic things here. One, our commitment to MTSS has been effective and it has been working. And you can see students at all levels and content areas have made significant progress. You will see that in a few slides. So what's next? It's next, you can bring that there. We do have a high-impact tutor. We do have a high impact tutoring grant, a little $450,000. And we're hoping to hear more about how we'll be able to use those funds in December. We continue to bribe PD. Talked about that already a little bit. And we continue to use internal benchmarks to monitor progress along the way. So before we get to the results, what I'd like to do is just take a moment to thank our teachers, our paraprofessionals and our administrators for getting the job done in the classroom, in our schools. I'd also like to thank the board event for a moment because I think you'll be very happy with our results. But also, you contributed to this because you supported our pandemic recovery plan, both for academics and for counseling, two very important components. You supported our MTSS model, the paraprofessional development. You supported having excellent teachers. In other words, teachers are in short supply. And so our efforts to bring in teachers that are above your standard starting teacher salaries over and over again is a commitment to teacher quality that we talked about before. Right? That's definitely something that leads to, even when you have turnover, you still can get good results when you have good teachers to replace teachers that have left the district. The other part is the board's effort to support higher goals, to improve our special education programs. So from last year, I'm thinking of also the purchase of software like Linkit and iReady. So both of those software packages are very expensive, but they make a huge difference in terms of our ability to hone in on what our students need, what are the specific skills that we need to develop. We can learn about student strengths, where they need help. And also, our ability to benchmark is all tied to the software. So next slide. So you can see, we have a number of points of pride. And you get to see that in the numbers when we get to them. But we made significant improvements in many, many areas. So we did areas. Grade seven and grade eight math. You can see both increased percent of students meeting expectations and greatly outperformed the state, which you will definitely see in a very visual way. And that's also considering the fact that our Algebra I students are not included in those results. So that was an issue that we had a number of years ago. But now that has been reversed in a lot of ways. For grades eight and eleven in science, we both saw increases in the percentage of students who are meeting expectations and particular high school special education students performed well. And also ELL, significant increases in students meeting expectations in both language arts and math. So the other thing I'd like to talk about tonight is pandemic recovery. We do know, so there's a bonus presentation, just like a mini presentation within this presentation. We know that many parents are interested in knowing about how far behind their children are academically because of the pandemic. And you'll be able to see a little bit about that. I'll be talking more about that in a bit. And like I said, we'll also, we'll have a graphic representation so you can see where the district was, what happened during the pandemic. And you can see that we're definitely on our way out of it and definitely moving in the right direction as a school system. But for the rest, for this part of the presentation, what I'd like to do is first of all, thank Donna Reishman, also of her work and her efforts as essentially our chief academic officer. That's, that's her role. If it was a supersized district like Atlanta, that would probably be one of the titles that she would hold. But she's obviously done a lot of work to coordinate this. So I'd like to just turn things over to Donna for more specific information about our district performance.
Thank you. And I would like to echo Dr. Toback's sentiments. The true heroes is our, our, our teachers and our students. This was a heavy lift. So many of our students, you know, third graders, it was their second time being in school. They were home essentially for, for two years. Students were coming in with, you know, lots of emotional trauma from being home, different situations in their house, you know, different gaps to fill in. And it was not easy for these teachers. They were working every day to assess and meet the needs of every student. And that looked different every single day. That's why we committed to an MTSS, multi-tiered system of support for our students. Our directors, who coordinated all this training, and the principals, who had to get on board and make sure it was executed and they were seeing it happening in the classroom. I, I, you'll see tonight that the results of all their efforts are tremendous. And our students made great strides. I, I usually come and say Governor Educator of the Year award. That's my favorite night of the year. But I think this is a close second because it's, it's really an opportunity to celebrate everyone. It was, everyone had a hand and it was a collective effort. So we'll break into our analysis. So these are the Spring NJ SLA, Student Learning Assessment for ELA. And here you can see that the number of students exceeding expectations, that's the highest score. And, and we have those little green, these are images. Because we worked with Linkit, everything was uploaded from the state there. So I have, we had to put an overlay on. So those little green, I don't know what you would call them. But it was a way to emphasize and show that we, students exceeding expectations significantly increase at almost every level. For meeting and exceeding expectations, we outperformed the state at every level. So it's really impressive. This slide shows the same information using graphs. And again, I draw your attention to the green on the top compared to the green on the bottom. We outperformed the state. Look at the seventh grade ELA scores. Remarkable. This slide details the Spring 22-23 New Jersey Student Learning Assessment math scores. District-wide, we outperformed the state in meeting and exceeding expectations for math. Grades six through eight show significant growth. In grade six and in geometry, students who are approaching are now meeting expectations. We made great progress. In grade eight, a large number of students who are approaching expectations are now meeting expectations. And again, we're happy to report that in both ELA and math, we are recovering from learning loss of the pandemic. Great gains. This is just the graph orientation. And once again, look at the green. Geometry is a wow. But overall, we did very well. If you look at the trend lines for grade eight math at the state level at the bottom, and look at our grade eight math, you can see how well we did. The green bar. And also note that our highest performers in eighth grade, the algebra students, are not factored in this data. So those students were pulled out. So this, again, remarkable. Kudos to our teachers. Here are the science scores for grades five, eight, and eleven. We highlighted in green to show the significant decrease in the percentage of students performing at levels one and two. So you can see that those numbers went down. We really moved them. This is the first year that the state reported grade five science, so we don't have a comparison for grade five. It was not necessarily an increase in the percentage, but an indication of better performance overall. This is the graph orientation for, for science. The state trend shows a greater number of students with minimal proficiency. The assessment, again, is new, but overall, you can see our students made progress and exceeded the state performance. The, the next few slides are going to detail pandemic recovery. And Dr. Toback is going to walk you through these.
So for those of you in the back, you may not be able to see all this, I'm going to explain very quickly. On the bottom is grade three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine from left to right. And the very last column is all grades. So that's kind of like a summary of basically where we are as a district in terms of achievement and growth. And then the different color bars are, you can see dating back to 2016, 17, 17, 18. So in other words, what this is, is a five-year trend. And you can see the little dot that is in the middle. That denotes essentially the division based on the pandemic and where things were. And then the pandemic hit. So you can see that the pandemic and the numbers directly to the right of the dotted lines all generally show some level of decrease across grade levels. Right? But then, as time goes by, you can see 21, 22. You know, maybe there's a little bit of bounce back. But you can see definitely for 22, 23, our last year, the dark purple or maybe like navy blue, we consider that color. You can see that definitely in language arts, we are headed back in the right direction. So you could also see the difference. So for example, at the district level, prior to the pandemic, our highest score for language arts as a composite is 73%, right? Right now, we're at 69%. And so what we fully expect is by the end of this year, at our next round of standardized testing, I'm sure we'll be where we were or ahead of where we were, based on, based on what you see so far. So you could see a similar scenario with math. And you can see the differences, what took place during the pandemic by grade level, where we are now. And you can also see that we're headed back in the right direction. To the right is all grades. And so that pretty much tells the story. We're definitely heading back. The highest we performed prior to the pandemic was 64%. We're at 55% as a district. So we still have a little way to go. And the other thing that sort of, I guess, should be mentioned here is the Algebra I scores. And you can see that those scores were already very high. They continue to be very high. So there's not much growth that you can, you can demonstrate when you're already at like 99% or 98% at that level. There's not much growth that can be shown because you're already performing at an exceptionally high level. That's basically our math. Okay?
Oh, okay. Sorry, clicker back.
That's okay. Is that right? All right. That's fine. So then.
No, I don't have the, the clicker.
So anyway, so for science achievement and growth, okay? So proficient and advanced, like the numbers that we really look at, what percentage of our students are proficient or advanced. You can see grade five, grade eight, grade 11, and all grades. So it's a little bit different because we don't test science at every grade level. Those are the grades that we do test it. You can see that is also headed in the right direction. And with the all grades indicator being the one on the right. So in that case, we're actually ahead of where we were. That's that. And so I think that's the end of the pandemic recovery information, the presentation within the presentation.
Okay. So the next section is our demographic analysis. This slide shows our ELA performance by subgroup. Two areas to celebrate this year are improvements district-wide in the number of black and white subgroups exceeding expectations. We were consistent with all other subgroups. And here is the same information with graphs. And again, note that the green areas are significantly greater than all other colors, which points to show how well our students are going. This slide shows subgroups for, for math. It's broken up by demographic. We made strides with the percentage of students meeting expectations. This means we have many students who were not meeting or approaching grade level standards last year who made significant progress. And again, that's small group working and providing targeted intervention every day. Again, drawing your attention to the green. That's our new favorite color. But you can see the growth. This is the Spring NJ SLA subgroup for science. In all areas, we have a greater percentage of students reaching the advanced levels in science, which is great. Look at the green and the dark green. And again, I'm just reminding you that science performance exceeded the state. And it's, it's a relatively new assessment. And it was the first year that the fifth grade scores were reported. This subgroup slide breaks out ELA by gender. It shows that females at all grade levels increased in the area of exceeding expectations. Males stayed the same. And typically, females score higher on ELA. It's just a general statistic. This is the subgroup, again, by gender. Here you can see males and females are not scoring differently. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. Going through it. This is ELA. ELA, sorry. Shows that females at all grade levels increased in the area of exceeding expectations. Males stayed the same. Here's our ELA. No, here's math. I'm sorry, I'm working off of two documents. Okay. So math by gender shows that males in elementary school showed significant growth in the number exceeding expectations. Both males and females in middle school show growth in meeting expectations. And again, if you can see the green bars. This next one is subgroup gender for science. In all grades, the number of students meeting proficiency standards improved. Females at all grades, we had fewer in minimal or limited category and more are proficient. And, and again, the, the green bars show proficient and advanced proficiency. So this subgroup is our section, includes section 504, ELA of Special Education and General Education. For Special Education, note that decreases in the percentage of elementary students not meeting expectations. And they are moving to approaching expectations. In all grades, we've seen an increase in the percentage of our ELL students meeting expectations. This was really great. And, and this shows the graph orientation. There's subgroups by, by math. In both elementary and middle school, there are fewer ELL students in the lower performance categories. There's graph orientation. And this is science. Our specialized students in grade 11 have shown growth in that there are fewer percentage of students with minimal understanding and more students demonstrating proficiency. And here are the graphs. This is access scores for English language learners. Our ELL students are progressing as we always hope for. Our access scores have shown proficiency and developmental improvement across the board. The majority of our students are exiting the program in three to five years, which we hope for. When looking at the beginning and entering categories on access 2.0 testing, I, I wanted you to know that 97 students who have enrolled in the past three years were foreign, outside of the United States and have been in the U.S. for less than three years. Just to give you some context. Seventy-three of our current ELL students are classified under IDEA or 504 and are eligible for both language support through ESL and as part of their IEP. They are receiving services. Again, recognizing our teachers. We have excellent, excellent ELL teachers. Students are exiting the program ahead of the state timeline. Right now, we have thirteen certified English as a Second Language teachers who are striking students daily. This is an increase of four teachers from 2018-19 school year. And overall, the enrollment, our ELL program has soared. We have over 300 students this year compared to 168 that were enrolled in 2018-19. And that concludes our presentation. Any questions?
So I was lucky enough to go to Anthony Wayne Theater. The ASSB, the presentation there, I think it was fantastic there. The things are going so well. But it wasn't just causing pain. So we're targeting as well. We could also get support for the threes.
Yes. And the ones and twos were moving up correctly.
Ones and twos are moving up as well. And that really helps us focus not just on those that are critically down, but also those that are just a little bit down, which will really help us move up further on as well. And then the other one, Mr. Sakkas and I were lucky enough to go to the National Honor Society for the induction yesterday. And that was over 100 students that were capable of getting in juniors and seniors together. Will be an entry mission. That's a real good indication of how well both the middle schools and the high schools, things are really progressing nicely. So I think that's great.
Thank you.
Good job. I mean, it's a long road. We all know that. It's not going to happen overnight. We're moving in the right direction. And, you know, and I agree to what Brian said. We're getting that middle group now and we're really being able to excel them up and accelerate their learning as well. Excellent job. Thank you all. Thank you, everybody, for all the hard work and doing it. It doesn't come easy.
I just want to say, this is only one year of support post-pandemic. This is an amazing accomplishment because there was a lot of fear, quite frankly, from parents and even from us. Sitting up here, it's like, are we going to be able to get them back up quickly? Especially, you know, the middle and high school kids that really need to have those grades to get where they're going at the next level specifically. You know, you always think the kids, the younger ones, the younger students will, will come along and it'll be okay. But, you know, it was, it was a mess from top to bottom. So this is fantastic. And I'm very happy to see the progress. And clearly, we're continuing, you know? It's not like, okay, we're good now. No more extra help. So, yeah. Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Great night. Great night for Wayne.
Good stuff.
So if you tonight, under key emergent human resources, we have a number eight approval of district staff. We have a removal rescind on number twelve. Katina AKANU, bus driver, transportation at full-time equivalent of one, seventy-one dash zero six dash eighteen backslash DVG from account line eleven triple zero two seventy one sixty-one dash five one dash zero zero nine, effective ten twenty-three twenty-three at thirty dollars and sixty-eight cents per hour on step three of the bus driver salary guide of five twenty-two, five hours per day with benefits. And that's a removal rescind. We're adding two from executive session, which is under H, emergent school resource legal. We'll be adding number one, approval of settlement agreement and general release. That action reads as follows. Resolve that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of superintendent hereby approves a settlement agreement and release in the matter of student ID number six three five four three eight nine one five, OAL docket number EDS dash zero zero two zero zero dash twenty-three. Agency is dated September twenty-six, twenty twenty-three as attached by reference and further authorizes the board president and secretary to execute same on behalf of the board. The business administrator and superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of settlement to further implement same. We'll be adding X two, which is approval of settlement agreement and general release. That reads as follows. Resolve that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of superintendent hereby approves a settlement agreement and release in the matter of student ID number eight zero five four two nine four seven seven nine, OAL docket number EDS dash three five six two four dash dated October three, twenty twenty-three as attached by reference and further authorizes the board president and secretary to execute same on behalf of the board. The business administrator and superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms and the settlement to further implement same. And that concludes the changes to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. At this portion of the meeting, we'll open to the public on agenda items only. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under whole business. Do I have a mover?
I'll move.
Anyone from the public on agenda items? Seen nobody. We've got the committee reports. Just with the tab.
Tonight, the personnel committee met. Myself, Mr. Padlock, Ms. Wintick, along with Ms. Park. We reviewed the September twenty-six personnel committee minutes. We reviewed HR agenda items for tonight's agenda. We discussed the nurse consultant stipend position. We also went over policy P three one six one and four one six one, which is examination for fours, and P and R three two one two and four two one three, which is the attendance policy. And that concludes my report.
CJ.
Facilities and transportation. We met on October seventeenth by Zoom. Myself, Mr. Prasakos, Mr. Batterhill, administrators Lawrence Tivitz, Peter Romaine, Richard Skavitsky, and William Mombit. We started with agenda items. The rod grant approvals for partial roof replacement at APT Ryerson, Tunis Di, Wayne Hills High School boiler, and this is one of rod grants. It looks like they're going to be adding some more money to the pot, and we might be able to get some more items in there. We went over the minutes, operations, update to general operations. Wayne Valley High School underground wiring in the parking lots for the lighting was rerouted from the top of the pole down to the bottom of the pole, and this was all done in-house. We need to contract that work out. So in the future, fixing the lights will be a lot easier. They don't have to climb. They started closing down the fields for the winter with the seeding fertilizing and the blankets, which was a pilot started last year, and we're expanding that because it was successful. When we pulled back those blankets, the fields were green and ready to go, so that was definitely a worthwhile endeavor. We had a request from the community about idling. Idling is a problem at our schools, and it's bad for air quality. It's bad for everyone that has to stand out there either at drop off or pickup, and it is against the law to leave a car idling in front of a public school. So the signs are there. Please pay attention to them. I know a lot of people like to get there, be first in line, and it's going to start getting cold, but bundle up and turn your car off, please. Projects, we, the central office, as you can see, we're back. Not completely. Downstairs is still being worked on, another four to six weeks there. The Wayne Hills High School Next Gen Science Lab is still ongoing. The Wayne Valley is in closeouts and came in under budget. The APT and Randall Carter restrooms are completed. The Fallon restroom had to be moved to twenty twenty-four because we couldn't find a contractor, but the work is beginning on that as far as issuing POs. The data center, which is part of this overall project we did here, is ongoing. We needed to have more power brought into the building from DSENG, and that's being worked on, and that requires a lot of approvals, et cetera. And much of this is going before the planning board on November thirteenth. It's basically just a perpunctory review and rubber stamping, but it still has to go through the process. We do have a generator, but we'll be purchasing a new one to handle the larger capacity needed here, and the older one at some point will be moved on to another building that needs one because not every one of our buildings has a generator, and that's something we've been trying to phase in over time. The data center by next year will be completed. There's still a lot to be done there, and it comes from pretty far away. It has to be trucked in from North Dakota, and they have to do a slab. Even that takes a month to cure. There's a lot involved there. There's an HEAC maintenance position open. We have a gentleman, Forrest, who has been in that position for thirty years, and he's retiring and taking all that extreme knowledge about all our HVAC throughout the district with him, unfortunately. Let's see, progress report has. We talked about the referendum and some changes at the architect. They've had a changeover of people, so they had some new ones come in that needed to everyone sit down and be brought up to speed. Our long-range facilities plan has been approved by the state, and that's key to getting things going. We're going to begin working over at Preakness now that most of the staff has moved out of there that was using the building during the renovation of this building. We're thinking of possibly renting out that space until we have to go through the referendum process and refer that back to a middle school. And we're looking for a grant to help with the cost of expanding the ECC. The transportation department, most of the items on the agenda were discussed. There was a mechanic hired. We have a work-study student. We have two drivers in training. As everyone knows, I've mentioned it many times, we have an in-house CDL training program. So if anybody knows anyone looking for a bus driver job, we could use them. We still have three runs in a van that need drivers. We're using our athletic drivers to fill those gaps. So it's tough. It's tough to keep these routes going. God forbid someone takes a sick day. It just, you know, throws a big cog in the wheel. So we do need more. We did manage to put out a run for forty-four students, and that took two buses and took them back into action for other routes. There were some issues with Encores. Those have been done. North Coast striping is done, and of course, there were the flooding issues, but all of that's over with. Thank God, hopefully no more monsoons. That's it.
That's it?
Shut up, Sean. You don't want to know? I won't tell you.
Is it possible for us to get a list of the projects that fall under the rod grants? And then what are the projects that we are thinking for the referendum? I know last couple times we talked about getting a list, but we never looked back once we could get a list.
We were waiting for the approval of the long-range facilities plan, which is now done, so, yeah.
We needed that first. If we didn't have that, we couldn't do any projects.
So the Technology and Safety Committee met on October eleventh with myself and Mr. Patel and Dr. Jobshard. We discussed the wiring downstairs. That's all done. We're not holding up the work downstairs. All the technologies in place. We also discussed the data center upgrade that's already been covered, so I think that's good. We spent some time covering various cybersecurity issues and so on as well, which is in progress. We talked over the learning management system and the migrations around that. We talked over staffing and some positions within the, within Jobshard's area, and we talked over the website update again, still targeted for this fall to go on.
Any other committees? Do I have a, do you miss the agenda?
Most of the session.
New discussion on the agenda.
Just want to point out a couple of things. As always, the members of our community that support our students with work-based learning, Wayne Valley Athletics, Lou's Landscaping, Northern Regional, Rosaria's Tractoria, and Little Book Costco. So patronize those businesses. And the donations, one very special one, from Lou Avolio, Lou's Landscaping, on behalf of his deceased mom, who was a teacher at IHM GW, and Anthony Wayne. Want to thank the Avolio family. And Wayne Hills Band Boosters for a fourteen thousand dollar trailer donation for the band at Wayne Hills. That's a wonderful donation.
Why don't you do the other ones, so that we get the donations?
What?
There's one more donation.
The Wayne Hills PTO?
And we write them into the record.
Okay, the Wayne Hills PTO. Donation to be used for planting of shrubs and plants at Wayne Hills High School. Beautiful beautification. Thank you to the Wayne Hills PTO.
I'd just like to comment on Mrs. Olivo. Annette Olivo, she was a dedicated teacher devoted to our district, who touched countless lives with selfless dedication and unwavering kindness. Mrs. Olivo committed to, was committed to her students and the community, who are unparalleled, and she tirelessly worked to accommodate the needs of those around there without seeking attention for herself. Beyond her role as an educator, she was a pillar of strength for her family, exemplifying the values of responsibility and care. Her passion for teaching shone through her work at George Washington, IHM, and Anthony Wayne High School, where she ran the student council, giving an indelible mark on the school itself. In honor of her legacy, her son Lou from Lou's Landscaping has donated trees and a bench, which will soon be put into place at Anthony Wayne to ensure her, to commemorate her impact to the education community. And we thank Lou, and we will miss Mrs. Olivo. On a personal note, my, my daughter's had Mrs. Olivo, and she was a neighbor of mine, and you talk about a person, a great person. Her name is definitely one of the people. We thank her. We thank everybody for all the donations. Anyone else?
Mrs. Wintick?
Yes.
Mr. Batterhill?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. Jirana?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mr. Prasakos?
Yes.
And Mr. Padlock?
Yes. We have some retirements?
Eileen Sparrow. Eileen Sparrow has been a paraprofessional for Wayne Township Public Schools for almost twenty-three years. During her tenure, she has served in the capacity of a one-to-one, shared, and classroom paraprofessional. Whether working directly with an individual student or as part of a program working with more than one student, Ms. Sparrow always puts students first and treats all with kindness and respect. Furthermore, Ms. Sparrow was a dedicated, devoted, and extremely kind caregiver. She was always willing to assist with and provide one-to-one attention to children who required extra attention in the extended day program. She was a staff buddy to some of our most memorable participants while working at Ryerson and John F. Kennedy. After taking a decade off from working before or after care, Ms. Sparrow came back as a caregiver at Pakinac to help the growing program with her experience and positive attitude and team spirit. As Ms. Sparrow prepares for this next chapter, she will be missed by colleagues, teachers, families, and most importantly, students. We would like to thank Ms. Sparrow for her contributions to Pakinac Elementary School and all of the schools and programs she has assisted throughout the years. We wish you all the best in your future endeavors and much enjoyment in your retirement.
Congratulations to Joanne Tagliamonte on her upcoming retirement from the Wayne Township Public Schools. Joanne has been teaching in Wayne for over twenty years. Prior to that, she taught for six years in Brooklyn. During her time in Wayne, Joanne has taught mostly fifth grade, preparing countless students for success as they journey into middle school. For those who know her, were in her, were in her class, we all know she had quite the love for teaching math. She always had inside jokes with her students and made connections with them throughout the school year. Her students were always rewarded for their great behavior when receiving compliments from the other staff members. Ms. Tagliamonte also ran several after-school clubs so that the students had an opportunity to stay active and positively interact with their peers. Joanne plans on spending her retirement enjoying time with her family, caring for a new grandchild, and traveling with her husband. We wish her nothing but the best.
Julianne Philip. Julianne Philip joined Wayne Township Public Schools in two thousand and eleven. During her twelve-year tenure, she worked with students at AP Tohun and Fine's Lake. Through her gentle, kind, and loving approach, she shared her love of music, movement, and performance with her students. Her grade-level performances highlighted her students' many musical talents, engaged their varied interests, and tied directly into their school's culture and values. She was a supportive colleague, providing flexibility and adaptability to help move our schools through social and emotional learning as well as academic programming. If you ever had the pleasure of having a conversation with Julianne, you left feeling positive and upbeat. Her optimism and kindness will be sorely missed in our classrooms and school buildings. We wish her her relaxing and well-deserved retirement.
Thank you. To all our retirees, we thank you for your dedication to our district and to our students. At this time, we will open for general comments. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comments on any topic. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under whole business. Do I have a mover? Anyone from the public wishing to speak?
Ryan Paul, twenty-one Berry Drive. Mrs. Kazan, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you. In all your years on the Wayne Board of Education, your most generous and useful contribution has come recently. Your decision to not seek reelection is the biggest service you can provide our community. Although I believe you didn't have a chance to win reelection based on your performance on our board, thank you for not giving everybody the opportunity to have to look at you as a candidate. Based on your actions at a recent board meeting, when you used your official position as an elected member of this board to disparage and campaign against the current candidate, I believe you've committed a substantial ethics violation. Board of Education meetings and time should be used strictly for board of education, official business, and not take time for your personal agenda. Although many of your actions over the years have been an embarrassment to our community, this has been most egregious. Your unprofessional and unethical behavior have no place on this board. I'm here to ask for your immediate resignation from the Board of Education so we can move forward board business.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, Mayor Girkov, one ninety-four Ratzroth, Chapat Center. I'm here not to discuss what I've come in the past to discuss, but to unfortunately discuss current events. I deal with a lot of teens, young people, students in the Wayne Public School system. And unfortunately, the Jewish people and the State of Israel are currently fighting a, for their lives. And it's sad that I have to have teenagers come to me and say, Rabbi, we don't know what's happening. We're scared. We go to school and we see. We go to school and we see images and paraphernalia from other students who are trying to intimidate us and to, and they're just clueless as to what's going on. Teenagers are meant to go to school, students, children are meant to go to school and be able to be safe from harassment, intimidation, or bullying. And if a student feels intimidated because certain images or paraphernalia may have a general, probably a general, a general meaning or message, but because at this specific time where a terrorist organization massacred the largest, and perpetrated the largest massacre of Jews since the Holocaust, and specifically this week you choose to wear that paraphernalia, that's intimidation. That's intimidation. It might not be bullying, it might not be harassment, but it's certainly the I. It is intimidation because they told me that they feel intimidated. And I don't think anyone else gets to decide what intimidates a teenager except for them or for the students. Especially a Jewish student, the Jewish population in the Wayne Public Schools is small, probably smaller than any other demographic. And those students don't need to feel intimidated. And I call to, I'm here to stand on their behalf. They're busy, I'm sure, maybe they're sleeping, maybe they're on their phones, maybe they're doing homework, I hope they're doing homework. But I'm here on their behalf to stand and say that intimidation specifically of Jewish people has absolutely no place in the Wayne Public Schools. And I encourage the board to take a stand on that, this is not a two-sided issue. We don't stand with terrorism, there is no justification for it, none. There never was, there was no justification for 9/11, there was no justification for Pearl Harbor. There is no justification for terrorism and the intimidation that paraphernalia and images bring to school. As I, and I reiterate, specifically in these two weeks, out of all of these students' lives that they have lived so far, they chose these two weeks to display this imagery shows what it actually means to them. And it might be ignorance, I hope it is, I attribute to ignorance what I cannot attribute to malice. And I hope it's ignorance, and if it is ignorance, then we should fill those gaps immediately. Thank you.
Francis Galley, 42 Norman Drive in Wayne. I guess my subject matter is kind of a little bit all over the boards, but it speaks specifically to what is read to all of us before we stand before this podium. Paraphrasing, discouraging, speaking negatively of an employee or a student. Mr. Pavlik and I had a little bit of an email exchange so I could kind of level set myself on what the expectations are of all of you before me, excluding administration at this point. It was more for Board of Ed and trustees. And although I understand what the expectations are, what happens when that doesn't happen? What happens when a trustee can use their closing comments to say, quite frankly, whatever the hell they want about somebody? And let me tell you, a year ago, the last time I stood at this podium, I had to defend my reputation because a trustee felt, coincidentally at the same time during a political race, that they could use my reputation and that of my daughter, in my opinion, to serve a political need. At that time, the slogan was, "Parents are targeting teachers." I stood at this podium and I denounced every single twisted lie and fabrication about me and my daughter. And the reason I'm standing here is because at the end of the September meeting, it was no different. I could read the paraphrase, it was a classic HIB case. Somebody who feels empowered by their position, one by one takes somebody out. And let me tell you, I am the face of what that does to the family that stands behind the people that are taken out. I cannot underestimate what was done to my daughter last year. Mrs. Reichman knows. Because I had to ensure that trustees don't have access to encores so that my daughter, who is applying to a public state school, couldn't be targeted because I did not trust that that trustee would not go one step further than what they did behind their microphone. Mr. Minionelli, God bless his soul, called me immediately and said, what can we do? What can we do for your daughter? Because he recognized what had been done. So I guess my challenge to the board is, and to anyone who stands before here, no one has a right to target anybody. You can disagree, we can all have different opinions, and we can all shake our heads and say, yep. But what happens, put yourself in someone's shoes, when you're watching one of those meetings and somebody starts to target your character because they don't agree with you, they don't like what you're saying, they don't like the message, so they go after you personally. And guess what? You, what can you do? The target's in place. Three kids through the school district. And I hate to end this meeting because this meeting was so empowering for everything that Wayne has done and continues to do. I have two boys who are college graduates, have masters, and are fully embedded in their careers, and a daughter who's starting out to be a teacher. I never thought I would end my devotion to this district, and many of you I've worked with, thinking that the biggest mental health crisis I would have with one of my kids came at the hands of a trustee. So I'm telling you right now, I was raised, apologies surely can help a multitude of sins. We never got our apology, we never even got an ounce of feeling like what was done was wrong. Maybe we'll get it tonight. But all I'm urging, what is the purpose of those closing comments? Nobody on this mic or any of yours should feel empowered that they can speak ill of anybody. It's just not right and it's got to stop.
Anyone else wishing to speak? See, nobody, one second. So Mr. Pavlik, I was wondering if you would take a moment to discuss the concern that was raised by, by Dirk Girkov?
Sure.
Regarding student peril?
Yeah, absolutely. The issues right now are timely and they are a concern to everyone. I would just like to indicate to the board, we have a couple restraints on ourselves. That one, we do have board policies that the board cannot take partisan political purposes or stances. So that's one thing. Two, in the environment right now, there is a clash between First Amendment rights and between bullying or other kinds of problems. Students have a right under the First Amendment to express themselves with their clothing, with other things of that nature. Where it becomes a problem is under the law where there's a substantial disruption to a community. That's addressed through our HIB process, it's addressed on an individual basis. If someone steps over the line, for example, our board policy says that with respect to dress, that you cannot denigrate another person's religion, or race, or thing by your behavior, that you have every right to express something positively or something that is not denigrating anyone. So for those reasons, I would just caution the board that you need to be careful as far as taking any kind of action in those areas. It's something we're very sympathetic to, we are aware of the common day issues, and we certainly, our sympathy goes to people. I would also like to, with respect to other speakers, just address in general, I'd like to remind the board members and caution them that they should refrain from endorsing candidates or advocating the non-election of candidates during the comments of board meetings. School Ethics Commission has stated that there is too great a likelihood that a board member's endorsement would be viewed by the public as an endorsement by the entire board. Even when a board member uses a disclaimer that they are not speaking on behalf of the board, the commission has stated that it's the substance of the comments that may render a disclaimer meaningless. Such comments have the potential to compromise the board and provide an unwarranted advantage to others. I remind board members, it is advisable to avoid making any comments in this area of board.
A question for the attorney. Does the board, does the board have the right to condemn antisemitism, or Islamophobia, or terrorism?
Once again, as I said, I think you tread on dangerous territory there. The board policies are that there should be no partisan political purposes, and there are, you know, concerns in that area particularly. You have to think about the range of all the individuals who are involved as well if you were to start considering taking a position on one side of a political issue or not.
I think the rest of the comments were not questions.
Any old business?
I, I do have a question. So when it comes to display of flags, can the board have a policy to do, to either allow or not allow and just keep it one way or another? Not specific flags, but any flags maybe, except, with the exception of American flags? Can there be such policy?
Once again, people have a First Amendment right to really express themselves and to have things. I think it would be problematic from a legal viewpoint, and I think it'd be challengeable. Yeah, I think, I think unfortunately, we need, under the law, we need to deal with things on a case-by-case basis. If someone acts out or does something that's inappropriate, we have discipline, we have bullying, HIB, we have things that we can do to address it on a case-by-case basis. So there should be some comfort to the audience that we have tools that if somebody does act out and acts inappropriately, that we'll respond and respond swiftly.
Any old business?
So, over the past few weeks, there's been a number of people that have asked me about some of my prior votes. Since we're in the old business, I think this is a good time to address some of those and my decision-making process. I want to take this opportunity to inform everyone that I am voting to ensure that the children are kept at the center of the system without any bias and take into account parents, teachers, the administration, and the community, and wherever possible, with full knowledge of vetting the matter at hand. As a quick rundown, the use of the remind system early in the year to notify parents at board meetings, this was dropped on us about five minutes before the meeting with no discussion. However, it's clear this would have impacted parents, forcing them to choose between spam messages and the important district messages that they are meant to receive. The mission statement, creating a vision for the district is the purpose of the board. Given the profile of a graduate that being run by Ms. Reichman and the involvement of the community and parents with some great feedback from those parents on the academic focus, it's been a great direction and start to that vision. The bleachers, I think this was a heavily data-driven decision that was clearly based on facts in a heavily emotional situation. The ongoing position of the bleachers post the successful referendum will continue to be the same. The absence policy, the move, the goal of moving the parental, of removing the parental ability to choose if a child is able to attend school without a doctor's note for 13 days of absence throughout the year and instead forcing them to get a doctor's note for every absence just in case they pass 13 days, 13 days they'll have paperwork. I think that would have been an unbelievable burden on parents, the district, doctors, and not in anyone's best interest. The counselors, there were some surprise votes against counselors. I voted for them with a majority of the board, as there was no evidence or discussion on to suggest why to vote against. They are paid through federal funds, and during a mental health crisis, why anyone would remove these services from children and support they provide to the families is beyond me. NJ4S, the program is again paid for through the state and goes further by not just providing students, but also the schools, the district, community-wide services, and add the option of parents with opt-in abilities. Specifically with, this will aid with the reduction of HIB cases and the wider understanding of the code of conduct and HIB rules, and it will address the mental health and anxiety issues amongst many other ways that we could use that. Speaking of HIB and bullying, we all need to ensure that we represent the behaviors we want our children to emulate. The ability for freedom of speech, constructive dialogue, and expression of personal viewpoint is key to democracy. It is very easy for online comments to spiral, grow, turn to name-calling, slandering, and group attacks. The definition of a HIB is where a power imbalance of a group of individuals goes after a single person is a good place to consider whether or not a conversation has gone off track. It doesn't do anyone any good. What is worse is when a small group of adults constantly monitor private citizens and then whip larger groups into a series of attacks. This is called gang stalking. It is a toxic online trend by keyboard warriors who can't explain the good points and positions. It is designed to limit the freedom of speech and true debate of ideas through personal attacks and intimidation of private citizens, often with no cause short of obtaining power and celebrity status. This has been happening to my wife, and the salander is at an all-time high. Especially in this election season when a private citizen on Valley Road posted a sign expressing her own viewpoint on candidates, my wife suddenly became a center of a series of attacks of a group engaging in gang stalking. Telling my wife or any private citizen what they can and cannot post goes against the very fabric of our society and democratic debate. Freedom of speech is recognized as a human right, and silencing others' freedom of speech is just wrong. This isn't what we would, what we want to teach our children either. We want to be role models in respectively disagreeing resolving the disputes. I strongly suggest that if you find yourself in a, in a group attacking any private citizen, ask yourself, is this who I am? Obviously, while I and the other board members and the candidates are in the public eye, we expect a range of defense against, debates against us. However, this does not apply to private citizens, wives, children, family, family members, and so on. We shouldn't accept this from our children, and as adults, it becomes very clear when you start attacking who the bully is. Let's keep, let's keep the balance in our viewpoints and encourage positive differences, not control of certain narratives that only suits only one specific special interest group's needs. Be vigilant of gang stalking.
Would you have other comments?
Mr. Paul, I don't think we've ever met, but you are entitled to your free speech and your opinion of me and any other board member, and I've accepted that throughout my tenures on this board. I have to say, over the last three years, I have taken my fair share of hits from this community. And again, never replied, never retorted, never commented on social media. But fast forward to the meeting in question. First of all, the person I spoke of, which I won't repeat the name, on advice of counsel, has made themselves a public figure, just like me. I'm a public figure. And when you become a public figure, you lose that right to not being criticized, that the general community. Mrs. Galley, I was at that meeting. I just want to make sure that you're not conflating my comments at the meeting with what happened a year ago because I know you weren't referring to me, I'm not the one who attacked you at that meeting. I just want to make that clear because the way you were speaking, it almost sounded like you were talking about me, and I want to make sure, I never attacked a member of the public at a public meeting. I kept my tongue, which is our role, you know, we are, we are not to criticize the community. So yeah, I'm not going to apologize to the person. I will apologize to the board if they felt that I overstepped, and even to the community if you feel I overstepped. But I felt strongly enough about what I said, and I feel I spoke the truth. And I will continue that commentary on my own social media. You're free to go on my Facebook page and see what I've said and what I will continue to say. Because when I do something this strong, there's a reason for it. It's because I have consensus for the future of this whole district. Look at the progress we've made, look at the presentations you saw tonight, look at these wonderful administrations we have. I think you need to think long and hard about your choices in the election. And I'll leave it at that, but this, this is my concern for the students. And for the sake of the students, everyone needs to make this very important, informed decision about who will be sitting here. But I'm proud of my tenure record, I'm sure not everyone agrees, and that's okay. That, that's America, that's democracy. So that's all I have to say.
There's a place in my heart that wants to accept Mrs. Kazan's apology, but I feel her comments eroded the public's confidence in this board and in the future boards. So, you know, I mean, Mrs. Kazan knows more than anybody else, other than President Pavlik here, how much training how much training the New Jersey School Board Association does to trustees all across the state. I mean, coincidentally, most of us are taking advantage of these workshops that are occurring next week. So, and there's a reason why there's staggered elections, you know, three every year where there's not constant turnover. But the one constant and the great thing about our district here in Wayne is we don't have turnover with the administrators, and the administrators are the ones that are running the day-to-day operations. So, you know, the public should not be concerned. You know, if there's turnover on the board, like I mentioned previously at the other meeting, everybody brings their own experience. And, you know, as I just mentioned before, the New Jersey SBA does a great job of training, you know, to get people up to speed with the required training. And we all have attorneys, every district has attorneys, and so, yeah, so I'll leave it at that.
Just to apply to the rabbi's statements, this is a scary time for everybody. It's a time in the world, around the world, that has been seen for a long time. And I just feel that everybody, the board, everybody just needs to pray for all those involved and hope that a peaceful resolution comes to all of this, whether it's in our school district, the country, the world, everybody. It's a scary time. And just the thoughts and prayers to all those that are affected, I think, goes a long way. And to reiterate that to our children at home, race, color, creed should make a difference. So, that's all I have to say. Pray for everybody. Just thank everyone for coming out tonight, hearing the great things about our district, and seeing that we are moving in a direction that is quite positive. And that's what we need to realize, how good we really are. And it's not about one person, it's about the group and everyone together. It's about an administrative team. It's about teachers, it's about administrators, it's about everybody who has their hand in this. One person can't make a difference. It's the group that has to make the difference. Yesterday, I had the honor of going to the Township Corporate Breakfast and meeting with the businesspeople in our community who we partner with as a school district. And to talk to them and to hear from them, when you say to them, how are we doing with the students we're giving you and your employee? And I have to tell you, it was such a positive response. That other businesspeople were coming up and saying, hey, how can we get involved in this now? That's what it's about. It's so positive, all the things we have going on in this district. And we should be proud of this district. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.